Are we ready to go?
I think they're waiting on one kid.
Should we wait or should we pound it out?
Right.
For the what?
Slowly.
Alright, we will go word for word.
Good evening everybody and welcome to the Forest Hills Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, December 13th. Do I have a roll call?
Mr. Bibb?
Here.
Mrs. Jonas?
Here.
Dr. Resmussen?
Here.
Mrs. Stewart?
Here.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Here. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.4, we have the safety briefing. The doors you came in are the access. We also have two doors down here at the bottom. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes. Item 3.1, we have the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting. November 15th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes. Item 3.2, the approval of the minutes of the special meeting on November 29th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Dr. Resmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes. Moving on to item 4.2, we have a special recognition for this evening. We have the Turpin High School Chamber Choir. We welcome Turpin High School Chamber Choir under the direction of Michelle Berkeley. They will be performing Carol of the Bells and Festival Deck the Halls. Moving on to item 5.0, we have the candidates for graduation presented by Kyle Fender.
Good evening. As a former member of the Turpin Choir, I'm very proud of what I just listened to right there. I was nowhere near as talented. I didn't quite make it to chamber, but boy, they were good. That was incredible. I'm here tonight because I have the pleasure to present to you an early graduate. Every so often, we have the fortunate opportunity for one of our young athletes to graduate early to pursue their athletic and academic careers at the collegiate level. Many of the premier programs around the country ask for the students to join the rankings this semester early, and that's what we have going on here. And not only is Jack a talented football player, top-notch young man, extremely, extremely hard-working individual. When you think about the commands of taking a full college preparatory and advanced course load on top of competing in one of the premier football programs in the region, and to add to that, he's taking extra classes this semester in order to finish a full semester early, and doing so with the marks that he has is truly impressive. And if you've ever met Jack, you would know just how impressive of a person he is. So with that in mind, the following candidate has now completed all requirements necessary for a diploma from Anderson High School as an early graduate, Giacomo Stanton Sumarco. I recommend to be placed on this agenda as a candidate for early graduation, and so at this point in time, the superintendent recommends the board approve the granting of a high school diploma to Mr. Sumarco. And he's here in the back if you wanted to see him. Not to embarrass you, Jack.
I'll make a motion to approve the granting of a high school diploma to Giacomo Stanton Samarko.
I'll second.
Mr. Bibb?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes. Next up, we have the reports to the Board of Education. First, we have Forest Hills Teachers Association, Chris Preston.
Good evening, and thank you for your time, as always. I want to express my gratitude to Linda and Leslie, as you both leave your roles on the Forest Hills School District Board of Education. The work of a school board is difficult. It's filled with many challenges and oftentimes requires reconciling different viewpoints. The Forest Hills Teachers Association acknowledges your service to our school district and our Anderson and Newtown communities. As you embark on your next chapter, we wish you nothing but success. On behalf of the members of the Forest Hills Teachers Association, I'd like to present you both with a small parting gift.
There we go. I know. Thank you, Chris.
And with that, I'd like to wish everyone a wonderful rest of December and a happy start to the new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Forest Hills Foundation for Education Report by Stacy Gillyard.
Good evening. On behalf of the Forest Hills Foundation, I'd just like to welcome everyone, but I'd also like to wish everyone a happy holiday. Like Chris just said, thanks, Leslie and Linda, for your time and leadership on the board. Also wanted to give a quick shout-out. We have the date set for the Forest Hills 5K. It's going to be Saturday, May 11th, so for everybody to get that on their calendars and save the date. And I also wanted to just thank everybody that has given, what I like to call the first half of the school year, all of our donors. We've been able to do a plethora of different things, and most recently, from the Suare, we were able to fully fund the child-focused therapist in the district, as well as additional STEM equipment at both of the high schools for their engineering courses. And then, lastly, too, we also support many of the district programs. I was at a spelling bee actually this morning at Sherwood Elementary, which was really fun. I forget, my kids are older, and I forget how quickly, like you go in an elementary building, and I'm like, my gosh, these kids are like, think everybody is so cool. And I'm like, I need those kind of kids back in my house. But wanted to say, we are proud to support that initiative. I know all the elementaries are hosting their spelling bees this week. So we continue to put the needs of Forest Hills students at the forefront, and we thank of all of our donors who continue to make that possible. And happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Stacy, I have a quick question for you. I know the Suare was since the last board meeting. How did that go? And do you have an update on that?
Yeah. So we, actually, I came right after. In November, I shared, we had the Suare, and we ended up bringing in 70, netting $70,000 from the event. So it was a huge success, thanks to everyone that attended. And we look forward to, like I said, our next event, which will be the 5K in May. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the superintendent update.
Thank you, President Hosfeld, members of the board. First of all, wow, that Chamber Choir, Turpin, my goodness, hit it out of the park. Ah, Lord. Yeah, I wasn't even, they couldn't, nobody sang like that when I was there. That was amazing. And congratulations to Ms. Berkeley. What a wonderful group of kids. So tonight, I really have the honor to recognize two members of our Board of Education who are stepping away after their current terms concluded into the calendar year. The Board of Education is such a critical component to any school district and the community. And the job has evolved and become so demanding, and I just really appreciate the deep commitment to public education and to the community as a whole. In my 20-plus years as a superintendent and assistant superintendent, I've just seen the evolution and how much more demanding the job is. And you're getting incredibly paid well, I know. That's a joke. They don't get paid hardly anything. But their time, the commitment to time, is incredibly important. It can be very thankless. I just appreciate all of you, but particularly, I wanted to recognize our two outgoing members. Dr. Rasmussen was elected and served the district and community for four years. Mrs. Hosfeld was elected and served out a two-year term. Dr. Rasmussen currently serves on the board's human resources and finance committees, as well as the legislative liaison to the board, while Mrs. Hosfeld serves on the board's policy, technology, and facilities committees, as well as serving as board president. Both of these ladies are passionate about serving our students, our staff, and our community. And I just want you to know that I appreciate both of you, and thank you for your commitment of time and energy to the Forest Hills School District. And with that, I have a small token as well.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you so much for your time and your commitment.
Thank you.
Okay.
What?
Oh, Josh is moving in.
I feel like the bags. Get my glasses off. That's awful.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Larry.
And, I know, if everybody would take just a minute, let's give them both a round of applause for their job.
Thank you, Mr. Hook. Appreciate all that. And the gift is not necessary, but thank you. All right, so we will move on to public commentary. We'll start with the procedures. So the board is always committed to conducting its meetings in a productive and efficient manner to assure that meeting is completed in a reasonable amount of time, plus also recognizes the importance of fair and adequate opportunity for public input. The board provides public participation. It will be a total of 30 minutes, and each speaker will have a three-minute time limit. If there are more than 10 speakers, we will adjust the individual time down to fit within the 30 minutes. We do not allow yielding time over. The board does not discriminate based on the individual content of the speech or viewpoint of the speaker. If several people wish to speak on the same topic, the time limit may be adjusted. Speakers are asked to speak from the podium and address the board. Speakers are asked to start by clearly stating their name and address. And up today, we have a total of 13 speakers. First up is Abby Adams. I'll call the next couple. Then we'll have Jane Colbrook and Molly McTie. Welcome.
My name is Abby Adams. I live at 1949 Wolfangle Road, and I just wanted to congratulate and thank Dr. Rasmussen for her four years of service on the Forest Hills School Board. The impact you have made on the lives of these children in the district is immeasurable. But to add to that point, the impact that you have made on us parents has been life-altering. You have set an example of strength, courage, and intelligence that is not easily matched, but is an inspiration, and I'm very proud to call you a friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jane Colbrook.
Leslie has been an outstanding and fearless board member, and we know all too well how fun and challenging this experience has been. We all had the time of our lives fighting dragons with her. That is why I thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Molly McTie. Is that okay?
Yeah. For what?
All right. So, I'm sorry, you are...
This is Jane Colbrook.
Jane, okay. And you're Molly.
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep. Molly McTie, 1745 Kingsway Court. And I just wanted to thank Dr. Rasmussen for being an outstanding board member. Thank you for supporting our students, teachers, and parents. You fiercely advocated for all students, including the most vulnerable. Thank you for never backing down in the face of misinformation and intimidation. Thank you for asking month after month at the board meetings for your fellow board members to rescind the resolution that has been an absolute waste of time. Thank you for your support to passing the levy and speaking out against the erasure of the Nagel mural. We will miss you, but you should be extremely proud of the work you did while serving us all on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. The next couple I'll announce, we have Daniel Lonnie, Mary Gardner, Barbara York, if you could be ready.
What Jane said. I'd like to take this time to salute Dr. Rasmussen. Everyone knows she fought tirelessly for the children of this district. She provided this district for four years of dedication, four years of skill, four years of determination, and four years of leadership. We've heard it said often that heroism is standing up for what's right against whatever odds. And Dr. Rasmussen certainly did that. But heroism can be as simple as leaving a place better than when you found it. Leslie Rasmussen made this district better, and that will be her legacy. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you. Next up, Mary Gardner.
I'm Mary Gardner. I live at 1038 Nimitz Lane, and this is my daughter Nora. Nora entered kindergarten in the fall of '21, which was, you know, which is obviously a very uncertain time. One thing that brought me and so many other parents comfort is knowing that we had a true champion representing us on the school board, whose only agenda was looking out for the best interests of all students. Thank you, Leslie, for your four years of service to our district. Your leadership and advocacy on behalf of all students, teachers, and parents has left a lasting impact, and we're so grateful to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie, for what you've done for us. We love you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Barbara York. Next couple after Barbara is Lindy DiMaria, Sue Wood, and then Jessica Cunningham.
I'm Barbara York. Today on Facebook, a friend of mine posted a James Baldwin quote, and it's been echoing in my brain all day. The children are always ours, every single one of them, all over the globe. Leslie, you have always understood that fundamental truth. These babies, your babies, his babies, they're all our children, every single one of them. You united and strengthened a community that has always been here, but too often told they didn't belong, or they weren't welcome. At great personal expense, despite stalking, threats, and intimidation, you showed up each and every time and did what was right. You didn't do it for ego, or for accolades, or for a partisan agenda. You did it for our babies. I don't know many people with that strength or that confidence. I don't think most of us, most of you, could have withstood that harassment and that stress. And it certainly would have been easy for you, Leslie, to phone it in, to take the easy road. But no, every single meeting, you have been protecting our kids. You've been giving them a voice. You've been making sure that they know that they are seen, that they are valued, and that they are loved. And today, Leslie, we see you. We value you, and we love you. And we are eternally grateful for everything you've done and for the ripple effects that we'll continue to have. Thanks.
Thank you. Lindy DiMaria.
Hi, my name is Lindy DiMaria, and I live at 6015 Crittendon Drive. And this is my son, Ethan, who is a fifth grader here at Mercer, and my daughter, Maren, who's a second grader at Mercer.
Just like the saying goes, not all heroes wear capes.
But we're pretty sure Dr. Rasmussen has one in her closet.
But we will keep this short and sweet.
Just like you.
Thank you for taking a stand for kids and diversity.
Thank you for all you have done in those past four years.
And as a graduate of the district and a parent of two future graduates in the district, thank you for taking a stand for our kids, for all the kids, for every family in this district, over and over and over again. I know these last four years have not been easy, but now you get to shake it off. But I hope this won't be the last time we see you up here on our board in the future. Thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sue Wood.
One of my favorite quotes is credited to Dolly Parton. She says, "If your actions create a legacy that inspires others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, then you are an excellent leader." I think she must have been speaking about Dr. Leslie. Leslie, your four years on this school board have been fraught with many challenges. Through all of those challenges, you have always kept our students at the forefront of your decisions. You have been the voice of students who may feel marginalized, ignored, and unseen. Your leadership has brought a community of people together who refuse to tolerate extremism, hate, and bigotry. Thank you from the depths of my heart. I love you to the hippopotamus moon and back.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jessica Cunningham. The couple, next few after that, is Lisa Dayton, Jennifer Caple, and Max Caple. And then finally, the last person is Kevin Majak.
Hi. Jessica Cunningham, 2011, Forest Crest Way. Tonight, we celebrate, and not just because it's Taylor Swift's birthday, but we want to properly honor a true hero in our community, my friend, Dr. Rasmussen. Leslie, we have faced some dark days in our district, and you have continued to be a light, sometimes the only light. I have been in complete awe of you, your courage, your dedication to all of our kids, all of our kids. While being outnumbered can feel defeating, letting those who feel like they don't belong know that... know that they are loved and not alone is one of the most important things that you can do in this world. So thank you for being that voice.
Thank you. Next up, Lisa Staton.
Hello, Lisa Staton, 6256 Sturrup Road. When you were running, I didn't know anything about you, so I went to meet the candidate night, and I made Viv go with me. And she was 10, and she mostly doodled, but she also listened. And at the end, I asked her, "Who would you vote for if you could vote?" And she said, "Leslie." And I agreed, and I did. And I'm still very happy with my choice to vote for you, and I appreciate all that you've done for the kids and for our community, and I just thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jennifer Capel.
Hey, queen, how are you? I'm gonna be honest, I graduated from here. My oldest is 28 years old, and I always trusted Forest Hills with my children, myself, my education. Never went to a board meeting. They were boring. You guys did everything that I wanted. I was thrilled to live here, to raise my children here. And then I was in the room one day with my husband, who got a call from work. He worked at Xavier University, and it was Xavier PD. And there was a threat made on your life, and they were gonna catch you outside. A local man had said he was gonna catch you outside, and the fire inside of me raged, and the trajectory of my life changed. Our life changed forever. I mean, come on, we're listing lawsuits together, right? You never, you showed up, and I know the bullets that you took, because I took similar, but never on a public scale like you did. And I wanted to quit, and I wanted to leave this district that I called my home because of grown men who have no idea and have no children, who want to take over this community for the wrong reason. And you were nice enough to, when nobody, including the superintendent sitting here, would not openly admit that my son never punched his principal, but Katie and Linda, you know, interacted with that. And I appreciate you so much. And my son has great mental health now, and we, because of you and what you've done, we've got two new candidates, and we'll replace the rest of these incompetent people that sit on our board who talk about litter boxes and think that boosters and school fees are gonna pay for levies. You've changed my life forever, and you've shown me how strong women need to be and can be, and this is my community. I was born and raised here, and these zealots are not going to take over, and these dragons, we're gonna keep fighting these dragons, because these men and these women that follow these disgusting men do not get to raise our children. And you've made an impact on my life, my son's life, and he would be here to talk about it if Andrew Pappas and Todd Mayer were not continuing to harass him and say that he still punched his principal. But you know who shows up every day and every conversation? You do. And I appreciate everything that you've done for me and my family, and you will forever be a queen, and if you need me as your dog, you got it.
Thank you. Max Capel.
My name's Max Capel, and I live rent-free in Kurt Hartman's brain. Leslie, well first, let me say that there was a time when I had no concept of the Forest Hills School Board. I would love to go back to that point in time, when I am not even remotely cognizant of a bunch of political machinations in what should just be a functional body. I so want to go back to that time. Before I continue. Leslie, thank you for continuing to serve this school district, even as you had to suffer the misogyny and bullying laid at your feet by the most feculent members of our community. I realized two summers back that you were suffering under a constant deluge of hatred when the Republican Ward Chair, Lisa "Daily Rainbow" Barton, leaned over my windshield and pointed at my Xavier parking sticker and yelled, "You must be with Leslie!" That was my first encounter with her, and that was really the first time I ever heard your name, and I had never met you before that day. I went down to the Patriot Center because it was in my backyard, and what I found was a bunch of virulently disgusting paperwork from some foul church in the area. And when I was so perplexed with that, that it almost made me retch, well then I got victimized by the ward chair, and, you know, the rest got written up, and anyway, Kurt Hartman's imagination, right? Anyway, continuing on. Leslie, thank you for suffering these zealot crybullies, because their behaviors have been revoltingly stupid. You have engaged with these topics in a way that was thoughtful and cogent and sensible, and we've got other people among you that can't deal with basic context of a word definition. You, Leslie, have stared this all down with kindness and decency, and it is a testament to your fortitude and your character. I, on the other hand, hope that Linda continues to get laughed out of every country club she ever gets to see the inside of.
Next up, we have Kevin Mijak.
Congratulations to Wendy and Jason. Look forward to seeing you up here and speaking with you over the next few years. My topic today, and will be for the next couple of years, is planning. It was great to see Larry at the township chamber meeting and Steve Seaver's presentation on the township's plans for the next few years. I appreciate Alana's five-year forecast being released, where we get to look at a preview of our spending habits based on the last four years for the next five years. Hopefully with planning, we can avoid another levy. My daughter is currently in eighth grade, I suspect, based on the five-year forecast that we'll have to put a levy on the ballot again, and she's in the 11th grade. I'd like to see if we might be able to stretch that out a couple more years. Also, the employee contract, which is 85% of our spending cost, is still up for negotiation. I'll look forward to seeing the impact on the five-year forecast of that negotiation result. Hopefully, that will be presented to the community in a very reasonable timeframe, so we all can take that in consideration. Also, capital outlay scheduled. John, hopefully you'll be able to work on something over the next few months, present to the community. I don't believe you'll have the financial resources in the next fiscal year to address the parking lots, the roofs, and some of the scheduled priority items. I would hope you might be able to present to the community a schedule of priorities of which the parking lots and which the buildings will need to be addressed within the scheduled timeframe, and we can see that kind of information reflected in the five-year forecast. The five-year forecast is a wonderful tool if you have an accounting background and you have the ability to read it, which, you know, I do. I would like to see Communications, since she's now in the aggregate program, if they could put together a planning summary, alright? What is the district's view, vision, plan for the next three to five years? At some point, we have a high school building that was built in 1960 with a swimming pool that hasn't been open for years. What is the plan to address these large expenses? Are we gonna go through consolidation again? That was a lot of fun when we discussed it a few years ago. So we need to have a better view, transparency, I do hate that word, but it would be nice if the board could start working on communicating that vision, that plan, to this community so that we may get some idea over the next three to five years, alright, where we're taking our school district. Thank you.
Next up, we have Human Resources with Rob Fellows.
Good evening to the board. Pretty straightforward HR report this evening. We do have three retirements for your approval this evening. Carl Little, custodian here at Turpin for the past 10 years. Cherie Powell, para, also at Turpin, 23 years. And Gail Prue, head cook currently at Mercer, and she's been with us for 21 years. So combined, 54 years of service. Like to thank them for their hard work and efforts on behalf of our students and our community, and wish them all the best when it comes to their retirement. Some of them will be done in a very short while, a couple weeks, and Cherie's going to thankfully finish out the year with us and resign at the end of June, so we can keep her with us and with our kids for the second semester. We do have four resignations on the agenda, and they're under Item B. And jumping down to Item E, we have five appointments. Four of those are replacing those four resignations, so thankfully, we do have some great quality candidates coming in, and like to thank our principals and directors for helping to get those interviews wrapped up before the holidays. Moving on to Item F, Special Services. Just like to draw Mr. Buck's attention to Camp Kern and all of the excitement there that we've got that rolling. Somehow, we're talking about Camp Kern, and it's coming, so it'll be fun. We'll hope for good weather. Item H, we have 10 subs for approval this evening, and Item I, we have 10 student teachers or interns as well coming in the second semester. Some of them are observation hours and that kind of thing, some are student teachers. Item J, we have 38 volunteers for the board approval this evening. And then the last three items, we have an updated job description with the assistant head cook, a couple salary schedules for updates. One is pertinent to next summer's summer school schedule, and the other is our operational sub-pay rate schedule, and that is in keeping with the adjustment to the para salaries from last summer. This is for our substitute, and I think I mentioned to the board in a recent report, but just as a reminder, that is an area where, from a paraprofessional sub standpoint, we are definitely experiencing and have been since, I don't know, three years that I've been here, a difficult time finding subs. So every time we see one on the agenda, we always get really excited. Betsy does a happy dance, and we're eager to get them in and working with kids, and hopefully this will be helpful with that, especially in the midst of a 30% fill rate right now, so. Final thing is that experience agreement with the University of Cincinnati for our student teachers and observers. Any questions? This does begin the beginning of our consent agenda as well. Thank you.
Next up, we have Biz Ops, Mr. John Ecker.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I actually have a very short agenda tonight, one item. It is just, we are requesting to advertise for bid for Anderson-Turpin air matics and central office roofs for the summer projects. And any questions? Okay. At this point, we'd like to recommend that the board approve the request to advertise for bids as part of the consent agenda.
Where will the advertisement be? Is there somewhere on the website, or is there...
Yes, actually, there's a legal process we have to do. We have to put an ad in the paper, Cincinnati Enquirer for two weeks, we have to post it on our website also.
Okay.
Yes, and those are organizations look at those on a regular basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Teaching and Learning Curriculum.
Hi, good evening. I have a very proud mom, so I feel like I want to say, in case she tunes in, because she sometimes does, I know it's after Labor Day. We were wearing winter white today at central office, and everybody changed their clothes, and I didn't, so I'm aware, Mom, it's okay. Honestly, I wanted to say to Linda and Leslie, thank you so much. On behalf of everybody in the teaching and learning team, just the support over the years around our work and asking questions and taking interest, it's very much appreciated, and I'm very proud of the work that we do, and I'm very appreciative of your interest and support, so, and we all are. And I ask these two to come up, because I also want to say thank you to them. It's been a mighty fun semester. Lots has been accomplished around course of study work, and they're gonna present that information to you tonight. And so Bob and Shane have really taken the lead on, again, when you're looking at three different courses of study, it's very labor-intensive, and it involves a lot of people and a lot of collaboration, and so they need to be acknowledged for that work, and I appreciate both of you, as well as the people who are part of the committees that are all listed in the courses of study. And there's a lot of people there, so I'm not gonna read them all off, but they are there. So Shane, if you wanna come on up.
Alright, before we get to course of studies, Bob will take that. Just gonna quickly review the course updates, recommendations. This is just informational, so this is a first reading. Just hitting some of these things really quickly. Nagel Middle School, we just updated some things to align with the course of study work through the music course of study. For the high schools, I want to clarify, there's a note on there that we're eliminating non-level general, or non-level core classes. There was a question about, does that mean we're eliminating electives? Not at all. That's not what it means. It just means that there were some lower-level classes that we had to streamline. There's a lot of different reasons that go into it. One of the main reasons is legally, and it has to do with special education, that we're eliminating some of those classes. We're updating language around the courses for various things around state requirements, and that also includes updating some information around the Great Oaks campuses and what their offerings are. Couple other, just quick highlights. Last year, we proposed a college prep career English 12, or English 4 class, and that was run as a pilot at Anderson High School. It was just a great way to prepare students, no matter what they were interested in, whether they were going to college or they were looking for the career path, to prepare them. Turpin has now adopted that, so it's no longer in a pilot stage, so both high schools will be running that. And then mathematics. The state of Ohio a few years ago said that not every student necessarily needs to take Algebra II as a course, and they presented a whole lot of different options for students in terms of alternatives to Algebra II. So we're implementing one of those, and that's a statistics and probability class for students, again, as an alternative to Algebra II that still fits the state of Ohio requirements. So those are the main highlights as information, and then I will turn it over to Bob, and he will touch the courses of study.
Good evening. Tonight, this is not part of the consent agenda, but this is the first read. The second and final read will come next month in January. So we have three courses of study that are ready to present to you, and will be available at the central office in the teaching and learning area. The first one is 11.2, Performing Arts Course of Study, 11.3, Physical Education Course of Study, and 11.4, the Visual Arts Course of Study. Once those are approved in January, then the real work starts, the mapping, curricular alignments, all those other fun things that come once adopted, so take a look at those for the first read, and we'll be back in January with the second.
And I'm back to close it out, and this part is part of the consent agenda. We have a couple overnight field trips that we are asking for approval. Turpin High School Orchestra is taking a trip to Chicago. Spearshank is leading that as part of her, one of her last duties. And the other one is Turpin Annual Trip Down to Cocoa Beach. The softball team is going down there as well. So as part of the consent agenda, we're asking for those approval. Thank you. Any questions?
No questions, and thank you. Next up, we have the Treasuries Report.
It's short for you tonight. It's Christmas anyhow. As always, we're gonna start with donations.
Alana, could you get a little bit closer?
Sorry, thank you. Donations over the last month totaled just over $5,700. Item, Treasuries Report, Item B, is the cash activity statement of board accounts that represents all fund activity for our fiscal year to date as of November 30. The next reports, the next in the Treasuries Report, is the revenue report for the general fund, our five-year forecast fund. It's for the month and the fiscal year to date ended November 30. Um, it's for the month and the fiscal year to date ended November 30th. November is typically a cash flow month and this November follow suit, um, we received only, uh, 1.6 million, but that's pretty normal and typical low cash flow month this, that, this month. Uh, expend- next reports in the treasures, uh, report are the expenditure reports, so items D and E. And again, you hear me say this every month, expenditures are very stable throughout the year. You can almost, um, divide our expenditures by 12. So with 41.6% of our fiscal year completed at the end of November, we've spent 40% of our appropriations with another, uh, 7.6% committed for future expenses. So again, spending is tracking right where we would expect at this point in the year. The next report, item F, represents the activity in our main PI fund, the special, uh, the special cost center for our, uh, taxes, and it is for the month of November and fiscal year to date, November 30th. The bank reconciliations and investments are presented in item G. And there's a slight appropriation adjustment, uh, that is presented in agenda item H. That is for some interests that, um, came into that fund, and so we need to add that to the appropriations so that the, um, uh, non-public school can send that, spend that. That's in 401. That concludes the treasures report, but I would like to take just a minute to thank Mrs. Hosfeld and Dr. Rasmussen. Um, like Larry said, you ladies have had long hours for very little financial pay. So I want to just thank you for your dedication, your leadership, um, for our students and residents of this district, so. And what are you going to do with all your free time now? So, thank you both. That said, I respectfully recommend that the board approve items, um, 9.1 through 12.1I, excluding those in the TNL report that are listed as in- information items.
I'll make a motion to approve action items 10.1 through 12.1I minus the teaching and learning inform- informative information.
Mm-hmm.
10.1, is that right? 9.1?
9.1, 10.1 was business.
Yeah, 9.1 through 12.1I, sorry.
Yes.
Reading the agenda.
Oh.
Sorry.
I knew what you meant.
Yeah.
I heard what you meant. We have a motion? Can we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Bib?
Yes.
Dr. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Thank you, Alana. Next up, we have, um, board discussion. 13.1, we have, um, policy committee report. We have a, um, excuse me, a policy, um, the policy committee, it will go, but we'll go back. The policy committee met on October 5th to discuss some of the NEOLAs policies that they were bringing forth in volume 42, number one. Um, a part of that, um, that grouping, um, it was a policy, um, on, um, the Narcan policy, which, um, we weren't able to bring forward last month, but we have since been discussing. Um, it hasn't been brought forward because we needed to have some legal counsel review and on the, the verbiage and stuff. So we are, the following policy is now being brought to the board for a first reading and the policy is a part of the fa- volume 42, uh, number one, a part of the NEOLAs policy that they're bringing forward. It's policy number 55330.05 and it's titled, "The Procurement and Use of Naloxone, Narcan in Emergency Situations." So, um, we're bringing it forward for the reading this evening. And then, um, during the second reading, w- they would, the board would then bring it forward to a vote. And I don't know if Larry, you have any other comments about this or not, but I think that's it.
Um, no, actually, really, you hit it all. It's, it'll, it'll come in for the second reading in January.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to 13.2, we have the, um, election of the president pro tem. Um, this is, uh, board discussion and brought to, um, a recommendation. Katie, would you like to make a recommendation? Katie?
Seeing as though Sarah was vice president, I think it would, makes logical sense for her to be president while you are gone.
Okay.
So.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
Second.
Okay.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Bib?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, 13.3, we have board discussion. Would anybody like to take the floor? We'll start with either on this side, that side, Bob?
I just want to congratulate both of you for your ser- service and it's been a pleasure to know you. I wish you both nothing but happiness and health and success. That's.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mom.
You're welcome.
All right. Nobody say anything bad after, because I want to end on a positive note here. Um, does anybody remember Forrest Heiss' last board meeting? He spoke for about two hours and cried. Um, I joked earlier this week with people that I would not do that, and then I already cried like 10 times. I promise I won't, uh, speak for two hours. I just wanted to really just take a minute to say what an honor it's been to sit up here and to advocate, to support, to get out in the community and, um, champion this district because I care deeply about it and the people in it. Um, I ran in 2019 before a lot of things really started, um, and with truly just the most sincere desire to help the community that I called home. And since then, I have had the great privilege of standing with so many different students from kindergarten to those graduating, um, to stand next to them, to hug them, to support them, to, um, let them know how much I care about them. And frankly, I have learned so much, so much from our students. Um, and things, very specific instances come to mind, and I'm sure, um, some of you all will know the one and only great Claire Mengele, um, and all of her, all of their good work. Um, and that's just one, just one of the very many amazing students that we have in this district, and I am just really grateful that, um, I got to know them and support them. Um, and I'm also very thankful to the various colleagues that have helped support me and educate me over the last four years. Scott Prebbles, who I'm sure tunes in still, um, who, you know, before I actually started, immediately called and said, "Hey, let's get to work," um, and, and taught, taught me and Patty Taylor, um, about what a board is. And I know that Larry has done the same, um, with, with those that are incoming and, um, I'm appreciated, I appreciated that then and I appreciate that now. Um, and then my other teacher the last four years, um, Alana Cropper over here, who is an amazing professional and human and asset to this district, um, and all the other people that work in this district. Chris, I remember sitting down and meeting you and Donna Lover very early on, um, and it, it's just kind of incredible that four years has gone by so quickly, um, and I'm, I'm glad that it has gone by. And the community members that have spoken out tonight, many of whom I are, have become my closest friends, who've become my sisters. Um, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart and I look out and I see their little kids there, um, who I absolutely love from the bottom of my heart. And, um, somebody asked me today, you know, it's been a hard run, would you do it all over again? And I said, yes. Um, because had I not done all of this, I would not have met the amazing people in this community. Some who I call friends, some who I just know in passing, but I appreciate and value their, their advocacy and concern and care for the students in our, in our community and our community itself. So, um, I'm very, very grateful. Bob, I want to thank you also. Some people know the things that Bob would say about me before we met in real life. And I, I say that in jest, um, but I didn't know what to expect with a lot of you, and I just want to take a, a minute to, to thank you, especially you have been incredibly kind in the face of, um, a lot of stressors, I'll say. Um, so I just want you to know publicly that I appreciate that. Um, and, you know, I just really look forward to continuing to advocate for students, advocate for this district, to support it in any possible way that I can, just from the other side of this table. And lastly, today's December 13th. There were 13 speakers. Many of the speakers, um, also referenced my love of Taylor Swift, and today is her birthday. So, when this is all over, I'm going to go cheers her and listen to all the music and go down the TikTok rabbit hole of, um, conspiracy theories and hope that we get Reputation TV very soon. And thank you all. Happy birthday, Taylor Swift. Thank you. Katie, Sarah, next up?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of things I wanted to share. Um, President Hosfeld, I'm sad to see that it's your last regular board meeting. The last two years have been an adventure. With the Dax deck stacked against us, we persevered. Thank you for stepping up and taking the leadership role the last two years. We really do appreciate it. It was, it's been lovely getting to know you professionally and personally. You're respectful, kind and a hard worker. You listen and think things through before reacting, and at the center of all of your decisions is what is best for students. Um, while you were involved on your committee commitments with policy and facilities, your core mission was centered around empowering parents. Parental involvement is essential to a student's academic success. Your work the last two years fostered ways to empower parents. And a couple of those being, um, one, streamlining communication between the district, individual schools, district families by improving weekly principals' emails. Um, piloting the parent academy to provide all students, or I'm sorry, to provide all parents the additional opportunities and resources to best support their students. Making sure students and their school counselors are including parents on decisions that impact their students either during high school or after their high school career. Uh, protecting student data by terminating the invasive panorama surveys that collected and stored student data on off-site surveys not controlled by the school district. And also, um, establishing a school board meeting recap summary highlighting, um, the total of the meeting. If someone couldn't watch it, they can go now and read the recap. Um, thank you for your service and you will definitely be missed. Um, over the last two years, some community members have focused on creating chaos and I just wanted to say that this board has tried to maintain its focus on fiscal responsibility, educational improvements and administrative improvements, and I'd like to highlight a few of them. Per the fiscal responsibility, this, the school district checkbook is now online. By making financial data readily available, the district is empowering the community to get a firsthand look at how taxpayer dollars are spent. Um, this board has also secured a new sports medicine partnership with the Christ Hospital in Ortho Cincinnati, resulting in an annual donation worth four times the previous contract, $200,000 compared to $50,000 annually, and that's a, um, million-dollar value over the course of the partnership. We also were able to secure $600,000 in district-wide safety grants, um, to include camera upgrades, building entry security and other safety enhancements. And we were also able recently settling the performance lawsuit. Uh, per educational improvements, this board has returned phonics to elementary ELA curriculum. As data suggests, this supports stronger reading and language development. We have standardized curriculum between elementary schools to reduce discrepancies in performance and to provide the same learning opportunities to all students. We have restructured the experience ship program at both high schools to foster, or I'm sorry, to focus on career development programs, internship shadowing and workshops. And we have also reinstated the opportunity for fifth and sixth graders to participate in the Scripps Spelling Bee. Per our administrative improvements, we have selected and hired a highly sought-after 2002 Ohio K-12 Department of Education finalist as our new superintendent, Mr. Hook. He brings 30-plus years of experience to this, uh, district and we are very thankful to have him. We have also improved communications and marketing by eliminating a contracted vendor and moving those duties to in-house staff. This has allowed our communications director to expand their team and to be more responsive without increasing the marketing impact on the budget. Um, we have also created a FHSD facilities program, 2002 to 2050, which is a centralized hub that enables the district to prioritize future facilities, needs and expenditures. By doing so, we will be able to better forecast, maintain our sites and plan for improvement appropriately in the most cost-effective way. And we have also added a second security resource officer to keep, um, our students Board member Rasmussen, it's your last meeting and I wish you well. Finally, to all the fifth and sixth grade graders in the Spelling Bee, um, good luck over the next two days. I'm proud of each and every one of you for making it this far. I hope you have been studying and preparing. Do your best and have fun. And to quote Ronald Reagan, "Spelling, like mathematics and reading, is a skill to be mastered, a skill that will open doors of the future," end quote. Have the courage to persevere during these challenging tasks. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to keep it short and sweet.
Yeah.
So, thank you, Lynda and Leslie. Best of luck to our on-boarders, Jason and Wendy, and I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I will see you next year, hopefully.
Thanks, Katie.
Thanks, Katie.
Sarah, my daughter Reagan, not after Ronald, but similar, won her class Spelling Bee, so tomorrow I'll be there cheering her on. So I meant, I was going to share that with you last week and forgot, but yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks. That's awesome.
And can I add to, um, Stacy with the Forest Hills Foundation? Thank you for, um, funding the Spelling Bee. It's been really great to be able to bring that back for our students, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so I just have a, a few words here that I'll, um, end with here. Um, it, it has been a true privilege here to serve on this board the past two years. I've strived to be fair and maintain a pragmatic viewpoint on all issues based on the facts that were presented to me without losing sight of the positions I stood for when I ran, as controversial as some of those might have been. I always advocated for protecting students' privacy and for parental involvement in their child's education. There were not many discussions I had without asking questions on how we serve to protect students' information and how we can keep parents engaged and informed. This is evident through the parent academy, which Sarah discussed earlier, expanding communications between our schools and families through principal weekly emails, as well as district-wide communications, teacher library catalogs and the disengagement of the invasive surveys that collected and stored personal data on off-site survey, ser- servers. I'd also like to mention that these accomplishments made over the past two years, that is regarded as having the greatest impact financially. We negotiated and settled five lawsuits, one having the largest financial impact and was the longest ongoing, which was the construction lawsuit. The district is now in a better position to plan financially with this behind us. Also, the creating, um, of the Forest Hills School District Facilities and Operational Needs 20, from 2022 to 2050, that program. I thank Larry and I thank John Eckert for putting that together. This prioritizes the district's facility needs and expenditure. This prioritizes the district's facility needs and expenditures, which we did not have prior to my coming. It became the basis for the passing of the levy and Forest Hills can now better forecast and plan for facilities and improvements that can be tied to the budget. I have a few thank yous to Larry, Alana, and their teams. Thank you so much for your dedication to aligning and advancing the excellent education we provide to all students of this district. Larry, since joining, just over a year ago, since joining the forest, you have made countless contributions balancing your passion and excellence for student success while maintaining responsible financial decisions. Keep up the amazing work. A special shout out to Jody, Josh, Jeannie, and the AV team. Thank you for all of the back office support and front-facing communications of the day-to-day things that you take care of that we have no idea about. You are the glue that binds the admin team together. I recognize that and we would not have these successful meetings without you. To Sarah, Bob, and Katie, it was one of the greatest honors to serve next to you. You each are truthful, kind-hearted, and the most giving people who want nothing but the best for everyone. I am proud of how you handled yourself through these two years and look forward to your leadership and guidance over the next two years. Leslie, it is because of your actions and engaged me and encouraged me to get involved. I'm so glad I did and I hope you have the life you deserve. Last but not certainly least, I thank you to my husband and children who have been my greatest supporters and inspiration. You witnessed and endured an ugliness that they could never have imagined and by the way, I would never wish upon my worst enemy. They made the decision to step up with me and I am forever grateful for their understanding, encouragement, and support. To my countless friends, thank you for your encouragement and unwavering support in that with all of this, I know I was doing the right thing when so many people are behind me and rooting for me. I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. Thank you. Moving on to the adjournment. 14.1, the next meeting of the Board of Education is the Organizational and Budget Meeting, which is January 4th at 6:30 right here. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm sorry, did you?
Second.
Mr. Bib?
Yes.
Mrs. Jonas?
Yes.
Dr. Rasmussen?
Keeping it classy, Linda. Yes.
Mrs. Stewart? Mrs. Hosfeld?
Yes, thank you.